Yeah. So I'm here already in place.
Right here.
Yeah, we're here, we're waiting. Start the session.
Hey guys.
How are you all good? I'm Sandy Epstein. How are you?
I'm gonna just put the, um, the aerial up tonight. And you guys just give a very brief overlay. You know, you don't have to do as much as you would be as far as the explanation, just know who you are, what you do, what you're asking from the word.
Mike is the, he's the Florida Director of Operations. He's his office is here. So I'll be in Mike's room. He was actually, uh, when we built the building, you weren't, you weren't, he wasn't camped on. He was camped when we built this building. I thought he'd get everything to be in just in case.
Yeah. Yep, but yeah, very good project.
Okay, we weren't sure if you or your body was gonna be.
Oh yeah, no, it typically just means for commissioning.
Okay, okay.
Usually body handles most PT meetings. That particular night, I had to be there for code items, so I was there anyways.
Okay. Will you help me out with that? They wouldn't have to walk around the street. No.
That was a fun question. Easy ask those kind of questions. They're the ones who are a little more quick with it. The answer would be like, okay, great, you know.
So we move on to the next one.
Yeah, right? Depends on what the next item is. Sometimes we don't want to talk about it.
Alright, thanks a lot. You should find.
Jamie?
Yep.
Hey, how you doing, Bill? Hey, nice to meet you. How are you? Good, how are you? Thanks for coming out. Great experience. That's awesome. How are you?
Hi, I'm Nancy.
That's pretty huge, huh? Man, that's awesome.
Hello, Mr. Merrick.
Hey, Dan, how are you?
Very nice to see you.
Are you, so you're speaking?
I'm maybe, that sounds, um... Um, well, right now, slogan on it's gonna speak. But there's also, um, slogan on the first year. And then after that, there's...
Okay, well, we can move down one.
I appreciate it. Sweetheart.
We got a booth and then I got invited.
She won't give them away anyway.
Ever seen the, like, court my life? I don't film that stuff. And I don't film that. I got invited this week, so I... My Insta download app actually stopped working with the update. How you guys doing?
Good, how about you? I only see you on Facebook. Hi, Ness. Hi.
It's crazy happy, cause we've been tight. Now that we even know someone here, that's way better.
She's in school, so I guess...
Yeah, trying to get here.
Oh, my.
So I'll be up down to state, be home for a little longer. I was supposed to leave on Sunday, might have shared the next day.
Are you still teaching?
Yeah.
Well, I'm still working.
Hey, Bill. How is she doing?
Oh, I got a question for you. And I'm gonna tell you at the meeting.
Which Chelsea was here?
Yeah.
I know, I know.
That's okay, I mean, I have nothing here.
You done for all the meetings?
Ready?
Jim, we're gonna do something first.
If anyone wants to be in the photo, come right over. Hey, how are you? Good to see you.
Grandma? Want to be in the photo? Come on, Grandma, you got the shirt on.
There he is. I just say to myself, oh, Tom here, I think I guess not that we...
Yeah, I was excited about it being today, that's why.
Samantha? Yes.
Have they taken over the sunset? Cause I can't believe that. They make everybody happy until the next day, right? By the next day, a lot of them happy, right?
You need to have yourself, you need to find a way.
By the end of the night, you can hear it's all happy, it's all sweet, but the next day, you're, it's a whole different world.
Right, well, here, let me move my arms.
Yeah, all good. You get an award today?
Yeah, I got it.
And so you got a national championship? Nah, what's your challenge?
Gosh, it's been forever. I know. Dad, I was just on the phone, she was like, oh, Jamie's here. I was like, oh, I bet.
Yeah, I'm into it today, I guess. Jamie Foy Day.
No way, yeah. That's awesome. Made it from the bottom.
Yeah.
But you're up top.
Yeah, I live in Sherman Oaks, like, a little bit near, like, Hollywood. Been out there, but I was gonna leave Sunday, but then I rebooked my flight for Saturday. I'll Saturday.
Sunday and I want to...
Yeah.
I know, I heard.
Crazy. Crazy as hell.
I think we're trying to get some...
Yeah.
Alright. They're all together.
How many hours? You got kicked off?
Apparently, they're not coming.
Ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to call to order the, um, regular city commission meeting for October 2nd, 2018. Uh, if we have roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky.
Here.
Commissioner Hornets.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Battle.
Here.
Mayor Gantz.
Here. Um, if we'd have everyone stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. If we could please remember in our thoughts Carolyn Mitchell, who is a long time BSO employee and a member of the City of Deerfield Beach Code Enforcement for many, many years here, who passed away this week. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no degree, and justice for all.
If we could have approval of the city commission meeting minutes for August 29th, 2018. The special city commission meeting minutes for September 13th, 2018. Uh, the acknowledgement of our city board minutes, uh, our education advisory board meeting minutes for Au- August 1st, 2018. Community appearance board meeting minutes for August 8th, 2008, uh, 2018. Hillsborough Inlet District meeting minutes for August 20th, 2018.
Um, I think we need to make two motions. Alright, I'll make one. I'll make a motion to approve the city commission minutes as stated and to acknowledge the city board minutes as stated. Can I get a second?
We have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, passes unanimously. And approval of our city commission agenda for tonight.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Words and recognitions. This is a treat because, as many of you know and have read about this, but, uh, JM Family Enterprises is celebrating 50 years this year. Um, that's an amazing accomplishment and to be one of the, the most outstanding companies there is, not just in Broward County or the state of Florida, but the entire United States. It's really a testament to the vision of Mr. Moran and the wonderful leadership that we have at, uh, JM Family Enterprises. We're proud to have you here in our city and, uh, we also look forward to your $150 million expansion that you have coming forward as well. Um, whereas 50 years ago on October 26th, 1968, automotive legend Jim Moran signed an agreement in Japan establishing Southeast Toyota distributors LLC as the exclusive Toyota distributor in five southeastern states. And whereas that milestone moment led to the creation of what is now parent company JM Family Enterprises, Inc. And whereas the now 15.1 billion diversified automotive company with more than 4,200 associates across North America has been headquartered in the city of Deerfield Beach since 1981. And whereas JM Family Enterprises regularly ranks as one of the largest private companies in the US and one of Fortune Magazine's best companies to work for. And whereas the company recently announced a $150 million investment towards its future in the city. And whereas JM Family Enterprises continues to be a driver of economic and philanthropic progress throughout the city and Broward County as a whole, we here tonight and I, Bill Gantz, the mayor of the city of Deerfield Beach, in recognition therefore, do hereby proclaim October 26th, 2018 as JM Family's 50th anniversary.
I just want to say, uh, first of all, we're very honored to receive this proclamation. Um, as you mentioned, uh, we've been formally in the city since 1981. Mr. Moran actually bought the land in the late 70s before he, he built the, uh, the start of the campus. Uh, but it's, uh, we have always been proud members, uh, of this city. Uh, we've always felt there's been a genuine partnership between the city, uh, and the company. Uh, we try to, uh, be good citizens, uh, within the city, uh, in supporting a lot of different endeavors. Um, and, you know, when we made the decision to, uh, reinvest, if you will, and, and put together essentially a whole new campus, we gave no thought to say, let's look around, let's maybe go somewhere else, or maybe let's knock on the door and ask for some kind of retention money. We didn't believe in doing any of that because we're proud to be part of here and, and our associates want to continue to be here. And we look forward to many, many more years of a great partnership. So thank you very much. Thank you.
My apologies for not announcing their names, but this is Colin Brown, the chairman of the board for JM Family Enterprises. And Ms. Carmen Johnson, the, uh, executive vice president of JM Family Enterprises as well. Thank you so much. If, you know, I was born in 1968, so here you are 50 years later and you're doing a $150 million expansion and I'm doing a 150-pound expansion myself. It's, uh, it's kind of appropriate. I think I need to get a better CEO though, for what I'm doing, clearly. Thank you so much.
Well, happy birthday.
Thank you. Um, next up, we have, we have one of our own that's been nationally honored here today. Uh, Jamie Foy, who is a Deerfield Beach resident and, uh, from Deer Runout in District 4, so Commissioner Drosky, little, little shout out to you. Whereas Jamie Foy, a native of Deerfield Beach, has represented the city with honor and integrity. Whereas Jamie's commitment and his determination towards the progression of skateboarding was recognized as Thrasher Magazine's 2017 Skater of the Year. And whereas Jamie has repeatedly inspired with both his athletic prowess and his caring, empathetic, and patient personality while acting as a global brand ambassador for both skateboarding and Deerfield Beach. And whereas Jamie and his family have been active in the Deerfield Beach community, as his mother is a veteran of the United States Marine Corps, has been a teacher for Broward County School District for over 15 years. And whereas Jamie has donated his time and expertise to Island Water Sports Daytime Radness charity event for the last seven years, which has raised over $150,000 for residents facing financial hardships. And whereas Jamie's actions to help make a difference in the lives of the youth through personal efforts and his sponsors charitable outreach, including work with the Grind for Life events with Mike Rogers, as well as donating every Saturday that he was not participating in contests to give free skateboarding lessons at Ramp 48. Whereas Jamie's ongoing pursuits of personal professional excellence has revealed elements of his character cherished by Floridians throughout the state, a willingness to work hard, a generosity of spirit, and an understanding of grit and an unwavering perseverance. I, therefore, I, Bill Gantz, the mayor of the city of Deerfield Beach, in recognition, do hereby proclaim October 2nd, 2018 as Jamie Foy Day.
Uh, I haven't had anything really prepared for this, but I just want to say thank you so much for everything and, uh, I've been living here for, since I was six, seven years old and I've loved it forever and I just want to try to keep the skating community good in Deerfield Beach and try to help better it if we can later on in the future and really appreciate it. Thank you so much, guys. Appreciate it.
So, a lot of things to be proud about here in the city of Deerfield Beach. Here's another bragging rights for us. We'd like to recognize, uh, Ocean Rescue for placing fourth in the US Lifeguard National Competition. The Ocean Rescue Department are representing the city, the United States Lifeguard National Competition this year in Virginia Beach, Virginia. Ocean Rescue scored fourth overall with only six, uh, with only six competitors. The Ocean Rescue team had a total of 17 top 10 performances. That means that we only had six in the competition from our city. So other cities had a lot more than that. The Ocean Rescue team had a total of 17 top 10 performances and had events canceled on the last day due to weather, which could have resulted in more medals. Stephanie Eisenring, Stephanie? Became our city's first open national champion in American Iron Woman event. We are extremely proud of our elite lifeguards gaining national recognition and our Ocean Rescue Department continuing to keep our beach and our community safe. Chief Mike Brown, you're doing a great job and thank you so much for all you do. If you guys want to come down to the front and say a few words, please feel free to.
I'll take the mic.
I'll take the mic, I know they're a little bashful. Uh, we're very honored to be up here. I'm super proud of these lifeguards behind me. When I say national competition, you're talking all of California, the west coast, you're talking Chicago, Texas, from pretty much New Hampshire on down, the Gulf Coast, all the Beast Patrols, 100-plus members, etc. Very proud of them. For us to have our first open national champion, Stephanie Eisenring, in the American Iron Woman, the hardest event, which is a row, a run, a paddle, and a swim. I'm extremely, extremely happy for them, so please recognize them, give them some love. All these guys did phenomenally. Thank you, guys.
Uh, I'm gonna embarrass them even further by going with their entire names here. Stephanie Eisenring, Jeffrey Noel, Thomas Nolan, Sean Gibson, Anthony Calley, and Dylan Orcowich. Thank you. We would like to embarrass JM Family Enterprises one last time because the Broward Sheriff's also has, Sheriff's Office has a presentation as well.
Mr. Brown, this is a small token of our appreciation for the very big tokens you provided us over the years here in the city of Deerfield Beach. provided us over the years here in the city of Deerfield Beach and the Broward Sheriff's Office. So, we just want to give you this plaque for all your commitment to the, to the city.
Thank you very much. That's right.
We are now at quasi judicial hearing. If anyone's going to testify, would you please stand and raise your right hand? Do you sound which way your testimony is about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and that's the truth to help you, God? We only have one quasi judicial hearing. Is the applicant here? Technical deviation. Please step forward. You have a right to a full quasi judicial hearing with the right of course examination or, or as most people do, you can waive that right. You have full opportunity to present your case, but it will be less formal. Do you waive the quasi judicial portion of the hearing?
Yes.
Okay. And your name?
Sandy Epstein, SCA Studios Architects. We're located in Atlanta, Georgia. With me is Mike Medina. He's the national, excuse me, the state director of operations, state of Florida for Republic National Steering Company.
Eric, are you going to give a little?
Well, the applicant is here tonight to discuss any questions that the commission may have, only to say that the, the item tonight meets all code required items with the exception of the technical deviation. This property is mostly a dead storage facility as they house alcoholic products and what they're adding is also dead storage. So, there's no additional need for parking.
Commission comments? Gentlemen, if you'd step aside, I'm going to open it up to the public if that's all right. Anyone from the public care to comment on item number four? Not seeing anybody come forward, I'm going to close it to item number four.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Let me roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
The next, item five, in ordinance of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, amending chapter 98 Land Development Code of the City Land Development Code by creating section 98 to 68 PDD Plan Development District, one of the complex tolerability qualification and effective date. Eric, are you going to?
Eric Power, Director of Plan Development Services. So, tonight I have a presentation for you, a pre-presentation on a proposed new zoning district called the Plan Development District, or the PDD. Essentially what this is, is an attempt for the city to provide for an additional redevelopment tool for properties in the city. These would be properties that for some reason, they have something odd or peculiar about them, or they have something, they're an older site, they have a problem with redevelopment, they can't meet the intentions of the current code due to the site and things of that nature. So, that's the, the reason for why we're looking for a redevelopment tool. And these projects would need to be innovative and flexible in their designs. They would have to meet certain criteria that is proposed before you tonight. I'm going to spend a little time talking about that. And anything in the PDD could be residential, it could be commercial, it could be mixed use. It's really up to the particular project that would be in front of you. So, what exactly would be happening? So, in a typical rezoning, if an applicant came forward with you to rezone, essentially what they need to provide to you is a survey and an application and a basic explanation as to what the purpose of the rezoning is, and that's about it. Mostly we see rezonings attached to a land use change like you've recently seen or attached to a site plan, but there isn't necessarily a reason or a need for any of those things. It's just what typically happens. What we're asking applicants to do is provide more information to us and to show that they're providing and doing something that the city would like to see in the rezoning process. So, we're asking for something that's usually typically held in the site plan process. We're asking for the rezoning time. And how that's going to happen is the applicant will require to submit what's called a statement of need along with a conceptual master plan and a development agreement. And these are items that you might typically see at a site plan phase, but we're asking them for the rezoning phase. The statement of need is very important, even though it's a, it's a word document, the intention of the statement of need is to really explain that this is something that they need to do, that there are no other zoning districts in the city that would allow them to build or design what they could do under, under a current zoning district. So, that's what's very important about it. And what we're going to have, what's in the code is the evaluation criteria. So, essentially they are to provide that information to, to staff and then for you to review, and then there is a criteria set in the code in which you would review it by. And then there are exclusions to this and essentially what, what I like to refer to as the niche districts, which is like the DBR, the Cove, the LAC, Local Activity Center, the Barrier Island would not be allowed to be rezoned for this district and any previously rezoned districts. So, you couldn't like double dip and rezone once and then rezone to this, you know? So, that would be the intention. So, going a little bit more about the statement of need and what that talks about, so we talk about connectivity, not just from a pedestrian standpoint, but also for motorists. If affordable or senior housing is provided, and if not is provided, is it provided elsewhere? You know, is it something that is, that is part of, of either the project or is available, you know, in the area? Energy efficiency, quality design, preservation of anything that might be important for the site, that may be landscaping, that may be historic element, they may be, you know, whatever is unique about the site itself, and that open space, public amenities, things like that would also be, would be given for the site. And so, what would, why would be the reason for that? Why would anyone want to do this? So, what is the benefit for the developer? So, essentially through the development agreement, which we do right now in a plan unit development or PUD, is the developer has the ability then to provide their own code relates to site data table. So, a setback, a height, a floor ratio, the number of units, things like that, those are things that, you know, that's what zoning code would be prohibiting or make it difficult for them to redevelop. So, this gives the, the developer the ability to provide justification to commission as to why they need something that's a little bit different than what would be in a standard zoning district. And with that, are there any questions?
Commissioner Drosky?
I met with Mr. Power before tonight and went over this particular item, and I just want to, you know, be clear that even if the criteria are met, it's still at the discretion of the commission, that these are project specific. So, we have the ability to not approve, even if they, so like on some of the zoning matters, we don't have any discretion. If they meet the criteria, we have to approve it. But this, I just want to ensure is different, that if we don't like it, even if they've met the criteria, we have the ability to reject.
That, that is correct and, and, you know, say, going back to originally what a typical rezoning is, there is really not a lot that we can do to reject a typical rezoning unless it's something like a spot zoning and we can claim that it is not in favor of the comprehensive plan or our land development code, but that, that, this gives us a lot more flexibility and leeway into making that determination. So, yes, you have the ability to reject it even if they claim that they meet all the requirements.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Anyone from the public care to comment on item number five? Not seeing anyone come forward, I'm going to close the items to the public. Commission comments?
I'd like it. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, a second. We have, actually, let's do a roll call.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
This is item number six, in ordinance of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, amending chapter 98 Land Development Regulation of the City Land Development Code by amending section of article two Deerfield Beach Land Development Code to revise provisions and regulations related to the development review process. Eric will be up again too.
Me again. So, Eric Power, Director of Plan Development Services. This is a very brief presentation, but I will tell you that this is, I know, not that exciting for most of you. This is the most exciting part of my night because this is getting approved. It's something we've been working for, working towards as a staff for over a year to, to really make the land development code and the development review process here in the city of Deerfield Beach exemplary. We want people who come to the city and want to develop in the city to have the easiest process they can have, not saying it's going to be easy for them to develop, but the easiest process for them to have, to understand what it is the city's asking for, what the city's looking to do, and how they can get that information to us. So, essentially what we've done is we've cleaned up the code and we've reorganized sections of code so that everything related to development process is in the same section of code, so you're not searching through the code to find all the pieces. We've also changed requirements of what is needed in a plan supplemental. At this moment in time, the, the code does not specifically state what is required per page, what's required on a site plan, what's required on a land development, you know, I'm sorry, landscape plan. We are specifically stating all the items that are required on each page. So, it's basically like a checklist for the applicant. We're also introducing what's called a conceptual engineering package. So, a typical situation with most developers is they don't think about the engineering plan until after they've come to city commission and they're trying to get a building permit. And that's a real problem because that could take longer than they expect and there could be problems in that plan that then come back and affect the site plan and then they're right back in front of you asking for a change. So, what we're asking the applicant to do now is to submit a separate document, no additional costs, but it goes concurrently with the application plan so that it goes right to engineering for a preliminary review. And then they make comments specific just to the engineering plan. So, you'll still get, you know, site plan comments from the engineering department, hey, this tree is too close to the fire hydrant, but they'll get comments that are specific to an engineering plan so that their engineer knows exactly what's needed to submit for that plan in the future, which could be several months later. So, that's one of the reasons why this is important to get this out now. We're also trying to clarify the difference between a major and a minor, very simply, a major goes to city commission, you know, whereas a minor, something that could be administratively approved, approved by the community appearance board, or approved by the planning and zoning department, I'm sorry, planning and zoning board. And then finally, we are proposing a fee schedule change. I just want to preface that tonight and the next item has a proposed fee schedule change and item I'm bringing to you next meeting has a fee schedule change. So, what I'd like to do is even though I stated on the memo, it would be at second reading, what I'd like to do is actually bring the fee schedule change to you at the first reading in November because it has multiple items and I feel like it'd be better for me to explain how we're doing cost comparison to other cities at that time. So, that is essentially it.
Thank you, Eric. Commission comments before I open to the public? Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes, Eric. For the benefit of the residents, how would this affect them? I, I know, I see it in here, you have exclusion, but I want you to let them know.
Sure. So, our current code omits single-family and duplex residential housing from the development review process. They're only required to get a building permit. And so, we continue to omit that. Anything that's higher than a duplex is required to get development review from, from the city.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Anything else? Anyone from the public care to comment on this item? Put your name and address for the record, please.
Michael Hudak, 34 Southeast 9th Avenue, Deerfield Beach, Florida. I think this is very, very commendable. My company, we've worked with Eric and his team for the last nine years since we've been here, going through hoops in order to, to get our building where it's at right now. And he knows of all the challenges that we've faced, so we really appreciate you, you know, cleaning this up because it has been a challenge. The different boards that I'm on, one of the keys is economic development and so making it easier for employers to, to improve their properties and for new businesses to come here to Deerfield Beach, I think is extremely important. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else from the public? I'm going to close it to the public.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Item number seven, in ordinance of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, amending chapter 98 Land Development Regulation to revise the certificate of use regulations regarding site inspections, revocation, suspension, and appeal procedures. Eric, you're going to?
I should set up here. And this was much needed. We, I'll indicate part of the improvements we made in the revocation process and to provide much more detail to assist us. We recently had to go through one and we were successful, but we realized that some changes were needed in that and some significant changes were made in that area.
Yes, thank you, Andy. That's true. So, and my last item for you tonight, again, a fairly simple one, but it does have larger implications. The certificate of use process is a development tool that the city uses to permit all new businesses and some home-based businesses in, in the city of Deerfield Beach and to ensure that they meet the regulations of the zoning district that they're in. So, this is an administrative process. They submit an application to us, you know, we review it. And this code was created in 2012 and the code actually states that you are, you are to have an inspection. Everyone is required to have an inspection. That's what we've been doing. However, we've realized that not everyone needs to have an inspection because there are several situations in which the inspections are planning, fire, and the building department. And what we've learned is that fire and building don't always have a role in the change certificate of use because there may actually be any changes. An example could be an office space where the previous office was an attorney's office and now it's a psychiatrist's office and they've done nothing except for change the couch, you know? So, an inspection isn't necessarily needed in that regard. So, what we're asking is, we're just basically making one simple change that instead of inspection is required, inspection may be required. So, anything that's brand new, obviously we'll still get an inspection. Anything that requires a building permit, any type of change, that would be a change to the, the use itself, you're changing from an insurance company to a restaurant, I mean, those types of things, of course, still require an inspection, but we're just trying to get what those like-for-like uses out of the rotation. And so, what happens is in that, that new language, just to show you real quick the breakdown, is we charge $400 for a inspection for a certificate of use, which is on the lower end with this, with the county. But all of that $400 is related to the inspection process. So, what we will be coming forward to you with in November is another proposed fee schedule. So, for those cities, sorry, for those businesses that will not require the inspection, we'll charge them an application fee. And so, that'll be the difference in the process. And then, that's what I was just saying for the issues. However, just bringing back up what, what, I'm sorry, what Mr. Modus said, you know, the other changes that are in the code really is just beefing up that language. When we wrote in 2012, of course, you can't predict everything that's going to happen. We've had a couple of issues these last few years where we felt like it was a good idea to increase some of that language.
Thank you, Eric. Vice Mayor Battle? Commissioner Parnas?
Eric, Mr. Power, explain to me how certificates of use address the issue that we have with sober homes, single-family moves out, next thing you know, they're cutting up or whatever and, and, you know, I stopped by and it's a sober home.
Yeah, you, you want to mention, yeah?
Yeah, the, a sober home is, is, and it's hard for people to wrap their arms around this, is not considered a business. So, it is not required to have a certificate of use and we cannot require it to have a certificate of use under the law as determined by the federal courts. It is not considered a business.
So, what do we have? What do we have that would, and, and, and I am not against at all sober homes or whatever the case may be, but I want them to follow the law. And having read the law, state law has some, some contingencies in it or some things in it that say that we must know or going through the process and even HUD law has some way that we can address that issue one way or the other. I think cities are afraid because of what happened in Boca Raton, but if you go back and you read the law, it's just dramatically different. It's, for those of us who live in neighborhoods, we, we gotta, we gotta do something one way or the other. I've even had people to move out because a sober home moved next door. We knew nothing about it. The city knows nothing about it. And there has to be some, Anthony, there has to be some way, he's retiring now. So, there has to be something that we can do or some way that the city can give its residents relief such that we won't have what happened with the gentleman over on Fourth or the, the lady that lived next door, three doors down from me because of a sober home. I just passed one the other day and I was telling him, I stopped to tell him, don't put the garbage out there. That's when I found out it was a sober home. We have nothing one way or the other which suggests that who's living next door to us? And something that we ought to think about, and, and I understand what you're saying, it's not considered a business, but it, there has to be something that we can do as a city in order to address that issue. Okay?
We'll work with the attorney's office on what we can do.
We'll take a look.
Thank you.
Great.
Commissioner Parnas? Commissioner Parnas?
Who makes the decision?
On approval?
Let me finish the question. I have a restaurant. Somebody else wants to come in and make a doctor's office out of it.
Right.
Okay. Who makes the decision whether they need an inspection?
Sure. That would be the planning department, one of the planners who is reviewing the application. And if it does require a building permit for like, that's what's called a, so those are different uses in the building code, so one's mercantile and one's considered commercial. And so when you're changing those, you're going to need, require, a permit, you're going to require inspection.
Okay.
Because building and fire would be involved.
So they can't do it on their own without asking the city's permission and getting it inspected?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Eric, just for clarity, again, the benefits to the businesses out there and why we're doing this?
Well, there's multiple benefits, not just to the city, but to the businesses. So obviously the benefits to the city is that we're ensuring that the proper use is in the proper place. The benefits to the city, I'm sorry, to the businesses, is that they know that they are in compliance with their permits. It happens very often, especially with tenant space, where a person will move in and then find out that there are some type of previous code violation or some type of other issue. This ensures that fire and building see that particular permit and they see that use and they can make sure there are no violations. And this, of course, helps them with their safety and helps with their insurance, all those types of issues. So this is really a safety measure for businesses to ensure that they're in compliance.
So if you go from a business to a business, like you said, changing out the couch from a different type of doctor's office, they would not have to go through a fire inspection?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So that currently is now a hoop that they would have to go through?
Currently, yes.
And we're trying to eliminate it?
Oh, yes, so I'm sorry. So from that point of view, we are making some people's lives easier by not having to go through that process, saving them some time in when they can open.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to open it to the public. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Not, oh, sorry?
All right, I'll be brief. My name is Dave Morantz.
You might want to wait till you.
Sorry, I'm brief. Dave Morantz, 7800 Northwest 87th Avenue, Tamarack, Florida. You know, the perception of the city for such a long time has been that, you know, having been business-friendly and the, these several items, the commission should be commended for the steps they are taking to make it easier for businesses to do business here. This last issue, Eric just said it, you know, for a office building, a service provider to come and take space and have to wait for a fire inspection or a building inspection can take days, weeks, or more. And then like anything else, you have to wait there all day for the inspector. And so that, that perception of the city as being business-unfriendly has now gone away. And I think it's up to the rest of us to, you know, to join Eric in saying this is a happy day for him and it should be a happy day for the city of Deerfield Beach because we're opening our doors for businesses to create jobs here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Not seeing anyone come forward, I'm going to close it to the public. Commission comments? Vice Mayor Battle?
Just very quickly, Eric, if you would, please. And I'm thinking about a restaurant that was, that's in my district and the man closed up and the, there was a new owner that was coming in and the restaurant tour was denied the right to open up that particular restaurant. What happens in a case like that with this certificate of use? I think there were some other things that were going on and you briefly mentioned some fees or something might not have been paid. I never got to the bottom of it.
Thank you. So when a certificate of use comes into the city, you know, we do look for any open code cases or liens and that might be one of the reasons. If there's something that, you know, was outstanding, they would be notified. Maybe, I don't, I'm not sure of the particular property, but a restaurant-to-restaurant would still require an inspection because they change hoods, they change fire apparatuses, they, you know, grease, things of that nature. So those would still require an inspection because building and fire would be involved.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other commission comments?
I'm ready to make a motion to approve.
All right, so we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Miller, second for Commissioner Parnas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay, passage unanimously.
Next is an ordinance to the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, amending chapter 98 land development regulations, specifically 98-95, landscape and paving of the city's land development code to provide regulations regarding the location of vegetable gardens. And the one significant change that was made as a result of the hearing at the last meeting is we have a definition of vegetable garden, which we reviewed pretty much all the Muni codes in the state of Florida for definitions of vegetable gardens and the one definition that seemed to be, that was everywhere apparently, is, and commonly accepted, is set forth in here, which means an area of land dedicated to the cultivation of edible plants. So it has to be a specifically, a specific area as opposed to, you know, a single pot with a vegetable plant in it. Other than that, it is the same ordinance and it's a second reading and public hearing.
Okay. Before we, I'm, Eric, can you bring up a photo, please? Just kind of give me an idea. I believe, Commissioner Drosky, I know you brought this forward, but talking with staff, I think this is the type of scenario that this ordinance is trying to prevent, something like that. I would imagine that scenario is what we're trying to prevent. And I think that's valid and I don't think, I think most people would have a problem with that if homes in Deerfield Beach looked like that with vegetable gardens in the front yard. I do feel, though, that this is, it's a little overreaching. And I think sometimes when you try to, try to prevent things like this, you swing the pendulum a little too far the other way and you get a little too overbearing, in my opinion. I appreciate the fact that we've made some modifications to this. I know there's a lot of people that, you know, are concerned about, well, I have, you know, herbs that are in pots and not pots that are in herbs, but it's, I'm glad we have some clarification on that. But for me, if, if maybe this was scaled back to form an ordinance that prevents this but allows people to have more freedom, maybe we restrict the square footage as far as how large it can be in the front yard or if we were to maybe put some things in there regarding the proximity to sidewalks or prevent them from going in the swales, but if you're going to put them in the front yard, they need to be a certain, certain distance from the sidewalk. Anything that tries to weed out, excuse the term, the problem, but also gives people more freedom because I think if, you know, you've got somebody that's got a small pepper plant sitting in their flower bed in the front yard that really is pretty innocuous and the fact that they could possibly be penalized for that concerns me. So that's my two cents on this. Commissioner Parnas?
I agree with you, Mayor.
I think it is overreaching. Next we'll say you can't walk your dog on your front lawn because somebody driving by may be anti-dog and it would offend them. When I read the ordinance, it says you can have your garden provided it can't be seen from the street. And I think that's overreaching. What's next? Only a certain kind of tree because your neighbors don't like palm trees or oak trees? Where do we stop? I think some freedom is necessary. And I agree with you, Mayor, that I think this ordinance is overreaching and needs to be modified so people can have their garden to a degree without offending everybody with, next thing we know, that, you know, I can't see corn growing on somebody's front lawn where you can't see the house. So I think in moderation, it would be a good idea to give people some freedom with restrictions.
Okay. Vice Mayor Battle?
Mr. Parnas, I'm going to agree with you on that. I think it's a bit overreaching also, and I'll tell you why. Every day I come out of my house and my neighbor has, she grows the best tomatoes, but she has it right, instead of a flower bed, she has tomato plants. I would not like to see that go away. If you're going to have it, if you restrict it such that we could allow those things, I think it would serve us better and it would also help our residents one way or the other. In no way am I condoning, even though I honestly believe deep down inside, Mr. Mayor, that, you know, if we grew vegetables in our front yard, it would help the homeless or whatever, provided they had access to it at will. But in no way do I want to see this happen in Deerfield or any other city. So the picture is very apropos. I just think we need to refine it a little bit more for me before I can vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drosky?
I mean, obviously I take a different position on this. I find the overreaching argument to actually be extremely disingenuous. I mean, we banned straws and we banned styrofoam and now all of a sudden we have a conscience on banning vegetable gardens. The logic just doesn't sit, doesn't sit with me. I don't, I don't know where it comes from. But we did define, you know, we did put in a definition for vegetable gardens. This is something that Anthony and I actually went over in detail. We defined it from the other definitions that other cities had. We limited it to an area of land, which was very specific and intentional because it eliminated the possibility of somebody having the pots being considered a vegetable garden. So we did away with that concern. You know, we've enacted a lot of ordinances and then gone back and tweaked and refined them later. So I would be in favor of, you know, passing this tonight and then if you guys have, you know, tweaks in the future, I'd be more than willing to consider them, but to pull the plug now seems a little backwards.
Okay. Vice Mayor, I'm going to let Commissioner Miller speak.
Yes, please.
Before you, since he hasn't spoken yet. Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, I originally liked this, liked this pretty much as is. The only reservation I may have had with it not being able to see it from the street, I mean, we have that with boats and such, but I might have taken that away, but after listening to the concerns of you and my fellow commissioners, and I don't know if we should do this on the fly, but I could almost see a compromise with saying, it's traditional that people that have bought their house with plants, you know, it's usually about a two or three feet area that's got planting and mulch and such like that. And as you have a neighbor that has some vegetables in that proximity to the house, that doesn't appear to be out in the yard or in the swale. So if, as a compromise to the three of you that are talking about you'd like to have some kind of compromise, I could live with no more than three feet from the house in the front, like customary, like most people's landscaping. There's no other extravagant landscaping goes way out and such, but for the most part, people have about two or three feet worth of mulch with plants in it. I could live with that in the front, but I, I think there's merit to have some uniformity in our, in our neighborhoods and not make, look like we're farmland, we're suburban. So, I mean, as a compromise, I would offer that kind of compromise and possibly with the back excluding the idea that you can't see it from the street.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to go on record as saying that there is a marked difference between banning vegetables that people rely on for daily sustenance and banning straws or styrofoam or whatever the case may be. I see a marked difference between those two things. And having said that, I, like my colleague to the right said, putting in some, what do you call them?
Edibles or vegetables?
Yeah, in the front yard, in a place that, like a flower bed, is inconspicuous or whatever the case may be.
We'd have to define it, though.
Yeah, but we would have to define it. And, you know, if we reworked this and brought it back, I would, you know, be inclined to vote for that.
Okay. Commissioner Parnas?
I'm going to make a motion to table this until the, at least the next meeting and have them rewrite it so that it's more acceptable.
And can I comment on that before I second it?
Of course.
I think we need to give them some feedback on how to modify it. You heard my thought, no more than maybe three feet from the front house, similar to what normal shrub is customarily planted. I could live with, based on your saying, I was originally happy with the ordinance as is, except for not being able to see it from the street. But that would be my feedback.
Okay. Just for clarification from the city attorney, if it is tabled?
Yeah, if it would be, a table is an indefinite, then would require a future motion to take off the table. Because it was, because it's an ordinance, I would indicate that if you're going to table it.
Say, come back in two weeks?
Well, I would defer to a time definite because otherwise, if you want to take it off the table, you'd have to take it off the table for the purposes of re-noticing it for the second reading because you haven't had the, there's no public hearing on a, on a table motion.
First meeting in November.
That's more what I was looking for, is there's no.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll amend my motion.
A motion to defer?
To table till the first meeting in November.
I would second that. I would second that.
So November 1st or?
The first meeting is first Tuesday.
First meeting in November?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me just say this, and Commissioner Drosky, I know that this isn't something you just came up with on your own. Obviously, this is complaints from residents that have concerns and brought this forward. Contrary to, I talked to somebody yesterday about this and they said, well, it's great for code enforcement because they make more money. Well, this fallacy that code enforcement is on a quota and makes money on every little citation, or in this case, it would be warnings first, is ridiculous. It's not true and it's not accurate. Quite frankly, we'd be paying code enforcement the same exact amount of money if they were just driving around and everybody was in compliance. Okay? The fees and fines that end up with people that are in violation, they certainly don't cover the cost of having code enforcement. What they're intended to do is get people in compliance and that's what the goal is. So this isn't about creating a quota. So I know the best intention was here. And the gentleman spoke the first time we had first reading on this, you know, he brought up corn. Maybe that's, there clearly is a reason for this. And my brief conversation with the gentleman was, there's some issues that this would address. So I think the table makes a lot of sense to reconsider this and maybe craft it a little bit differently.
And, you know, this would be a motion to defer to a date certain and for the public's edification, the public under statute has the right to speak on, has the right to have a meaningful opportunity to speak prior to the city's action on an item. Tonight is not action on the item as far as voting up or down, it's moving it to a different date. The public, when it's being deferred, again, for a date certain so that the public here knows when it will be heard and prior to the city's action on it at that time, the public will, must have an opportunity to be heard. And so basically you're deferring this item along with the public hearing to that date certain of November 1 and the public hearing will be held on that date.
Okay.
Call a question?
Commissioner Drosky?
I wouldn't be objectionable to hearing from the public tonight. I mean, we've done this before, we don't always have to.
No, it's up to you, certainly, yes.
I mean, maybe there's, you know, to hear with whatever comments are here tonight. I don't think it's going to take an organ and a time out of our meeting.
With that said, then, I'm going to open it to the public. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item?
Freedom Massey, 349 Northeast 19th Avenue. I think it's ridiculous, absurd. I thought we lived in a democracy, but when they're going to tell you that you can't grow vegetables on your property, especially when we have been trying to get vegetable gardens going here, the raging granny will be turning in her grave when this thing passes, okay? It really is absurd. Businesses are moving in, but guess what? People are going to move out. I think you should open this to the public, you should have a public hearing on this and get an input from the residences because it's an unfair thing. If you pay your taxes, you should be able to live comfortably in your home and have a vegetable garden. I have a certificate when I was in 3B. If I knew this was on the agenda, I would have brought it in. I got a certificate from McKinley School for my garden that I had on the roof of our house, a vegetable garden, okay? It's a very important thing and we are denying residents from having it. It's horrible.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Anyone else from the public?
Richard Rosenzweig, 97, Farnham, Century Village. Where's Barbara Miranda when we need her? I think having these gardens is a good idea. I do think it needs to be set up in a way that doesn't detract from the neighborhood and should be set up in a way that the neighbors are aware of what's going on in their areas so it doesn't become an eyesore. The main thing is if it's gonna be high-growth vegetables, like height...
I'm gonna pause you for a moment. Can you win from the audience, please? No comments from the audience while someone's speaking? Thank you.
So, in consideration, when they have high-growth vegetables like big tomato plants or corn and so forth, should not be in the front of the house or nearby. They might be plots set aside in areas where they can have, you know, people sharing plots as opposed to having individual plots in front of houses. While I believe that people should have the right to grow and to do, I think it's gotta be done with common sense as you look forward, bring this back again, to put in common sense approaches to how we do this without being detracting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. You name an address for the record, please.
Sherry Zettel, 3901 Northeast 4th Avenue. And I always have to say District 1 because Northeast 4th Avenue in Deerfield is somewhere different than for us. But a couple of things, if it's for beautification purposes, I wish somebody would just drive around my area and clean up some of the other things. I think a garden is the least of the problems we have over there, if that's the intent. My suggestions would be limit the height, and some of the other things I've seen where cities have outlawed or not allowed, like, I think they call them row plants, which would be like corns and things like that. So, but I'm not much of a gardener, but I understand, like, if you plant marigolds around certain vegetables, it helps keep bugs away. So, I mean, from an environmental standpoint and for productivity, I think limiting things totally from the front yard is a problem. The other thing I saw when I read was the right-of-way. Now, I have a neighbor who has a lovely garden, but he's on a corner lot. So when you drive on the side street, you can see his garden. Will that impact his ability to...
This way?
You know, and I don't think that's fair because it's in his backyard. Those were just a few suggestions that I had. Thank you.
Anything else from the public?
Joe Hines, 559 Northwest 47th Terrace. I'm sure glad that I don't live next to the door to this guy, but, you know, I think everybody ought to be able to have a garden if they want one. And I imagine there's probably some houses around town that probably don't have a side yard or backyard, so the front yard's the only place they've got. Another thing, you know, there's a lot of retired people around here, especially retired ladies. They like plants and all that and get a lot of pleasure out of gardens, taking care of them, tending them, eating what comes from them. And this is a tricky ordinance right here, if you guys pass this without really taking all that into play. And I hope if this goes forward, that it really has a lot of such of rules where people can understand it. You know, what about a guy that's got, say, a two-acre plot here in town? There's a couple of big lots out there that do have huge side yards that are visible from the street. Where's their front yard end and their side yard start? You know, so on and so forth. This is tricky, this is a slippy slope here, and y'all need to be careful in what you do about this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Dan Hurst, and I live at 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. I just want to read a two-paragraph article, actually, a very interesting article written by Judy Wilson in The Pelican dated September 21, 2018. The title of the article is, "Where Can Your Garden Grow in Deerfield Beach? Out of Sight." Doug Kennedy, President of the Woodlands HOA in Deer Creek, fears one resident growing vegetables in his front yard may inspire others who want to be farmers. So he approached District 4 Commissioner Todd Drosky about initiating a citywide ordinance against visible vegetables. "I could remove it under the HOA regulations," Kennedy said of his neighbor's garden, "but I thought an ordinance would carry more weight." When this was discussed at the last meeting, Commissioner Drosky said, and I quote, "As an elected official, it's our responsibility and duty to listen to our constituents' concern." This quote brings up a lot of questions, Commissioner Drosky. I know of two constituents of yours, Glenn Sullivan and Joe Hines, who brought you two simple ordinances over nine months ago that dealt with a simple request to move up the release date of vital financial information to the citizens.
Can you stick to the actual item that's being talked about?
Sure. I will. So I'll go on to say, also, does this set a precedent, Commissioner Drosky, that every HOA who has rules in their HOA documents can now come before the city to get an ordinance passed for extra emphasis?
Anyone else from the public?
First time here, sorry. Johanna Phillips, 1002 Southeast 10th Street. I feel that the landscaping and paving code regarding the location of vegetable gardens within the city is too broad. It gives code enforcement too much power to dictate what would be considered a vegetable garden. According to the code, a garden is considered an area of land dedicated to the cultivation of edible plants. It leaves a lot of questions for many people. You answered my question about the hanging plant, the hanging pots and all that, but one other question I had would be pineapples. I plant them, I don't plant them all in the row, I plant them around my front yard. They're like five-year-old pineapples, they grow pineapples for me. Would that be a violation? That would be a problem for me. Also, the way that this code is written, it would also eliminate having fruit trees in your front yard. And there's a lot of people in Deerfield Beach that have a mango tree, an avocado tree, including myself, so. I just feel like the way this is written, it needs a lot more, it needs to be revisited, it needs a lot more detail as to what we are allowed and what we're not allowed. And I honestly don't see, I like seeing tomatoes in people's yards when I walk by their house. I like seeing, by the way, tomatoes are fruit, not a vegetable, but I like seeing those sort of things.
So are pineapples.
Yeah, exactly. But the way this is written, it says vegetable garden, but it's not really, it would be a violation to have a pineapple then, too, if that was the case.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Are you okay if your neighbor's yard looked like that?
I would like the empty lots in Deerfield to look like that, but maybe not my neighbor's house.
Me would, too. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else from the public?
Michael Hudak, 34 Southeast 9th Avenue. I have to agree with what the public is saying. I think we're cringing too much on what people can and cannot do. I think it's more important to set guidelines as far as what the garden would look like, maybe the height, the distance from the public area with regards to, you know, the sidewalks, or in my neighborhood, there are no sidewalks, but I think that's more important in dealing with the intent of the law, not the letter of the law. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben Preston, 640 Southwest 14th Court, Deerfield Beach, Florida. I think this is more a solution, looking for a problem. You have to look at, when you talk about gardens in the city of Deerfield Beach, it's actually cultural. This was a farming community. So many people used to plant gardens, still do today, so it's a part of their heritage, a part of their culture. They depend on it as a part of their livelihood. And you wouldn't know that if you wasn't part of the community or if you didn't live here. So when people come in, well, that doesn't look good, and they want to eliminate it, not taking into consideration how the people feel about that. It's a part of their heritage. This was a farming community, and it shouldn't be taken away. And it should be, this should be something that this board should consider for the people, for the people. It's not a harm, what's the problem? People are paying taxes? I mean, this is, like I said, this is a solution, looking for a problem. Leave the people alone, it's not a problem. Pay your taxes, grow your vegetables, it's not a bad thing, it's a good thing.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Not seeing anyone from the public, I'm gonna close it to the public. You know, before I call a question, I'm gonna say this, I think most people would agree that they don't want homes to look like this. There are, this is not isolated to the one gentleman, because we've had, heard problems about this similar type of thing, that people have said, "We want fruit trees banned." Because they said, "Well, I don't eat them, and my neighbors have mangoes that fall in the yard, and it attracts rats and rodents, and we've heard that for many years." We've heard the same problem when it came to anything that's in somebody's yard that people are offended by. But I will say this, I think that some of the points that were made tonight, there are some good points that say that there needs to be some control on there, because I promise you, there will be incidents that will pop up, and you'll see something worse than this. And you're gonna come to the city and say, "Why didn't you do something? This should not be allowed." We just shouldn't overreact, in my opinion, and I understand the intent of this, I agree with trying to prevent something similar to this, but, you know, you guys ever heard of a silk floss tree? Those are those ones that's got the really nasty thorns on it, oh, they're horrible. I mean, they look like a medieval weapon. You wouldn't believe that it's something that's actually real. There are, there's a house not far from my neighborhood that has several of them in their front yard. For years, we've had people come forward and say, "There should be a ban, people should not have that in their swale, what if little kids crash into that tree?" Which might be the reason this man has put these mini trees in his front yard. But they're horribly dangerous, and we allow those types of things. So, I mean, I think there's a way to do this and do it right, in my opinion. So I do support tabling. So I'm gonna call the vote, for sure.
Commissioner Drosky?
No.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bowles?
Yes.
Mayor Ganz?
Yes.
I think, let's see, we are, a public comment, but no comments shall be made related to the personal life or personal qualities of any person, and no language which would offend persons of ordinary sensibilities shall be permitted. This is an opportunity to speak for three minutes on an item which is not on the agenda.
Freedom Massey, 349 Northeast 19th Avenue. It has literally been for years now. David is no longer here from Parks and Rec. The last meeting that I attended, I asked him privately because I don't like to air the city's dirty laundry in front of everybody. I told him, I told Kara before him, and I told Jamie before Carrie, and I told a lot of people that work for the city, that underneath, not underneath, to the side of the pergola, going down to the pier, on the ground, there is a part of that ground, there is no grass, but there are what looks like wires or cables, there are things that stick out of the ground, and I almost fell on them the other night. Somebody is gonna fall on them and break their neck and forget that we're gonna be sued, but somebody is going to get hurt. Do we not have anybody in the city that is a steward of the city that goes around and looks for things like this and then have them taken care of? I consider myself a steward of the beach, but sometimes I have to be a cobra, like tonight, and try to get things done. I mean, it's totally absurd that these things are sticking out there, kids walk there, the bicyclers, it's where the bike racks are, by the way, going towards the pier. It's on the left-hand side, on the ground, they're all over there, they're like snakes coming out of the ground. We have, we should have somebody who goes around and checks these things. Besides which, the area is really so filthy. Don't, I mean, you take care of the walkway there where people, by the way, walk their dogs all the time, but you don't take care of the area where the fishermen go all the time. It is disgustingly dirty. It disgusts me. Every day I go there with my bike and I look around, I mean, I don't know what to do anymore about it. I mean, this is the pride of Deerfield Beach, is our beach, our pier, our walkway over there, and it's just, it's terrible, really. Something has to be done about it, please, thank you.
Thank you.
Vanessa Cupid?
I'm sorry, if you could speak into the mic, ma'am.
Vanessa Cupid, 3911 Northeast 4th Avenue. I would like to ask a question and get some answers. I understand that we are not allowed to cut the top of the trees, and also, if it's hanging in the road, we are not allowed to cut it. Is that true? And we also have to let the trees touch each other. Now, I have a driveway, and the birds shit in it, and the things fall on the tree, and I would love to cut it from the driveway. I have a light in front there, and it's dark because of the trees growing up, and I cannot cut it, I cannot trim it. Next question, that's saying is that we have a vacant lot where the project used to be before. I cannot remember the name of the street. We have eighteen-wheelers parking on the grass, tires thrown over there. If the wheel gets stuck, they put all crap to take the eighteen-wheeler out, and they leave it there. You all may be getting paid, three and four of them parking over there. It looked horrible, and the grass is dead because they're digging it up to get the things out. People going and throwing tables, toilets, and I suppose you all have to pay to clean it. It doesn't look well. But I would like to know if I can trim my tree from over the driveway. I would love to, because the driveway's like this, and the tree they want to touch is on this of my property, it's not in the road, and I would like to just trim it so I could get some light to come in. Is that the rule that you're not supposed to trim it?
We're gonna have staff get with you here tonight to make sure that we can get some clarity for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else from the public? Not seeing anybody coming forward, I'm gonna close it to the public. Anybody coming forward?
Dan Hurst, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. The contract between the city manager and the Deerfield Beach Commission was signed on September 7, 2010, or over eight years ago. Section 12 of the contract, which I have right here holding up, calls for the commission to perform an annual review of the city manager. No performance review has ever been conducted of the city manager by the commission. Now, maybe, as Mayor Ganz is so fond of saying, the fact that no city manager has had a review in 20 years wouldn't be of such importance if the city manager was doing an exemplary job for the citizens of Deerfield Beach, which is who he ultimately works for. However, year after year, there have been major financial mistakes, a lack of transparency, the 11th-hour release of vital information to the citizens, and a philosophy of tax and spend. As a result of the commission's refusal to evaluate the city manager, the citizens have decided to take it upon themselves to evaluate the performance of the city manager over the last eight-plus years. The first major area to touch on is some of the monetary issues the city manager has dealt with. One of his first major decisions was to have BSO take over the city's fire department. Deerfield Beach is one of only six of 31 Broward County cities to turn their fire department and EMS over to BSO. Who knows if this was a good deal for the city, because after six years, there still has never been a cost-benefit analysis performed on this major transfer of city tax revenue to the county. In 2012, the city manager on purpose decided to not pay $3,600 to reacquire one of six privately-owned beachfront parcels. His reason was he thought it was improper... His reason was, he thought it was improper to spend this money at a time when employees were being laid off. The city in 2016 eventually paid Mr. Sweetapple, Mr. Gold, and Mr. Speckler one point seven million dollars for the six small parcels, even though there were no other entities wishing to buy that property at any price. Why did the city manager not work with Mr. Sweetapple when he came in front of this commission in 2014 to possibly work out a settlement or compromise? When questioned about this transaction, the city manager's only comment was how proud he was that the city was able to negotiate not having to pay the one point seven million dollars out all at once, but instead pay it out over four years. In 2011, the city manager fought for new utility tax in an effort to diversify the city's sources of income to be less dependent on ad valorem tax revenue. His promise to the citizens was the mileage rate would be reduced and stay low after the implementation of the new tax. The mileage rate stayed low for two years, 2012 and 13, and then went right back up to a higher rate than before the utility tax was implemented. Now, let's look, Mayor, may I have an extra minute?
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Good evening. Christina Fink, 739 Northwest Forty-second Place. I just had a question about the calendar that's online and in the front kiosk of the entrance. I'm on one of the education advisory boards, and we meet the first Wednesday of the month, and it's not on there, and I didn't know if you can put advisory committees on the online calendar and also on the, like, the running kiosk that's outside. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Katie Freitag, 418 Southeast Second Street. I don't ask the city for a lot, but tonight, I'm asking the city to root for my Cubbies. And the game tonight, it's started, so if we can move this meeting along, I'd appreciate it.
I'm trying.
Glenn Sullivan, 2377 Deer, Deer Creek Trail, Deerfield Beach, Florida. Uh, I'd like to first apologize for my comment last week. I meant no ill will towards anyone on the dais, but that doesn't mitigate the fact that I was, uh, not afforded the, uh, the consideration to have, uh, my questions answered after much work on my own part. Continuing where Mr. Hens left off, the city manager has also shown the inability to properly prepare a budget. Time after time, examples have been brought up by the citizens of double-counting certain expense items. The proof is in the numbers, is starting in fiscal fourteen through fiscal sixteen, the city's excess revenue over expenses were eight and a half million, seven and a half million, and six and a half million, for a total of twenty-two point seven million dollars, with no reserve accounts. These were all underspent accounts, similar to what I brought up. So much for proper budgeting. And just recently, we have the city manager admitting it took him years to finally stop paying for over age sixty-five city and retiree medical benefits, even though he knew about this mistake all along. Instead of admitting to this major misappropriation of taxpayer money, the citizens were treated to a laundry list of excuses of why it took him so long to deal with this fiasco. The lack of transparency is also a great concern, cause of concern to the citizens. This was on full display during the February 28th, 2018 Special Cities Commission meeting to vote on the thirty-six and a half million dollar-
What date was that? I'm sorry.
February 28th.
Thank you.
The thirty-six point five million bond offering. Why wasn't the fact that the bond was sold with a five percent coupon interest rate raising an additional five point six million not revealed to the citizens until twenty minutes before the bond was voted on? The citizens are left with annual debt service payments much higher than originally proposed by the city manager. So much for transparency. This was nothing more than a sneaky financing trick to raise more money than was ever revealed to the public, and adding insult to injury, the city manager now refuses to use the capitalized interest fund to pay the initial year's debt service on the bond, as had been promised to the citizens, and instead takes two point one million dollars from the general fund. This is how you create a budget surplus out of thin air. Another moment was during the presentation of the seventeen budget, when he refused to explain how total employee salaries for the budget was, for the city, was budgeted to increase by over ten percent. It wasn't until months after the budget had been approved by the commission that, uh, the city manager had Amanda Robin explain to the citizens that the salary figure included adding back the five percent salary reduction the city had taken from each employee in 2012.
Thank you. I think you know the routine.
Excuse me?
I think you know the routine.
Absolutely. Ben Preston, 640 Southwest Fourteenth Court, Deerfield Beach, Florida. When I was, uh, elected, uh, city commissioner, uh, back in, um, two thousand and, uh, ten, issues would come up, and I was attacked a lot, uh, by some of the constituents. And I respond to that, to that, because I noticed that the three minutes that was given to them was not enough time, even though I was being attacked. And I noticed also there was some time of discrepancy, because some people would extend a little bit before that. But, you know, if you didn't like the person that was, uh, talking, then we would cut them off at that three minutes. So, I proposed that there be a five-minute, uh, time for the people to speak, and we agreed as a board to give them four minutes to speak, and then an additional minute, at the discretion of the mayor, uh, to give five minutes. First of all, let me just say that the time that's given is not enough time for, uh, a person to properly express whatever their views are. And secondly, the thing is, sometimes it's tough, because I sat up there, and I know how tough it is. But we represent the people. We're responsible for their money. We're responsible for the way that things happen in this city. They should be given all the time. Even if I don't like what they say, when I was there, that was a lot of times that I was being attacked. I did not like what was being said about me. But it was right that they should have the time to speak, because they are a citizen of Deerfield Beach. To cut Mr. Hertz off is not right. He's a citizen. He may not be agreed upon with what he's saying, but he's a citizen of Deerfield Beach, and he has every right to say whatever he, uh, needs to say, even if everybody disagreed. The additional minute would not have hurt.
Thank you. Anyone else for the public?
My name is Joe Hines. I'm at 559 Northwest Forty-seventh Terrace. Regarding the manager's review, I had a few issues with his capabilities also, and I'd like to tell you about them. Uh, manager, you heard this before, the manager's been breaking city, city policy for years by unnecessary paying premiums for retirees, which cost millions of dollars to us taxpayers. And this practice continued, uh, for several years after a citizen filed a complaint in 2015. Uh, several years ago, uh, this one's got me. Several years, several years ago, the city bought a ninety-eight-foot, or ninety-eight-foot, ladder apparatus for the fire department. You guys might have remembered. It was a million dollars. Uh, they said they had to have that, uh, vehicle in order to be able to replace one that was aged and, uh, wearing out. Of course, it was sixteen years old, but only had sixty-seven thousand miles. I've looked around for this city, for this apparatus, and I can't find it. I looked all over. I saw a picture in the paper about it six months ago or something, but I can't find it, and I just wondered if somebody would hear, if you folks know where it is, if you could tell me where it is, I'd, I'd appreciate it. I'd like to go over there and take a look at it. Only recently did the manager start releasing the monthly financial report, and I've got some of them right here. This financial report, um, was only released after a citizen made a commissioner aware of the requirement, and the lack of the inform- of this information has allowed the manager to hire the financial health of the city and keep commissioners and citizens in the dark, and ultimately lead us to more taxes. This is a, this is a failure to disclose critical financial information, which should have been available during the September budget hearings. The finance director attends each, uh, commission meeting, but the manager has never called on him to present a monthly financial report. The manager has hidden the financial health of the city. Uh, these documents I have right here show that from twenty, uh, 2011 through September 17th of 2017, there is a total surplus of twenty-seven point nine million dollars in the general fund alone for unencumbered funds. If you add everyone, I'm up through every year. That's twenty-seven point nine million dollars. Uh, the manager is collecting a hundred and sixty, uh, three, uh, taxes and fees from the city, and obviously thinks that's not enough. We pay two separate taxes on our FPL bill each month. The manager has implemented a utility tax, a stormwater tax, and increased the fire assessment fee, uh, during his tenure. Uh, since 2016, the manager received an additional forty-six million dollars and has managed to spend it all. The manager's withheld vital financial facts from the commission and citizens dated which would prove the recent stormwater tax was unwarranted. Uh, the manager has constantly delayed publishing the annual audit. Uh, this is necessary for the citizens to review in a timely fashion. This audit also has a compliance report, which lists efficiencies in city policies and actions which are needed for possible financial controls. Can I have one more minute, please?
Uh, no, actually, not tonight. Thank you. Anyone else from the public? I'm gonna close it to the public, then? Just a couple of things before we move forward. It's a rare night tonight, not just, and it's probably more rare than actually Commissioner Preston making an appearance at these meetings, 'cause he clearly hasn't been here in a long time. Because this is probably only the second night in which I haven't granted an extra minute, and the reason why is 'cause we have a short night, uh, and we have a couple of medical reasons why some people have to leave here tonight. So, we're gonna move through this a little bit quickly, but to address a couple of the issues, because people like to say we don't address it. Um, it's interesting, uh, that, um, that we have some, some of the issues that we're having with, with people being, uh, not seeing some of the stuff at the beach. I agree, people miss stuff. So, thank you for bringing it forward. We, we definitely need to get it addressed, and if we could have staff get with, uh, Ms. Massey to make sure that we identify exactly where that issue is, as well as Ms. Cuban. I, I believe I said your name correctly, Ms. Cuban?
Cuban.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Cuban. If we could have someone get with her also to direct that. Um, and contrary to what people like to say, the reason I don't look up when someone's speaking is I try to take notes. I suppose if I didn't take notes, you wouldn't be happy with that either. When it comes to, uh, an evaluation of the city manager, nowhere does it say it and how that's, that review is supposed to be given. Doesn't say it's supposed to be in public, doesn't suppose to be, say it's supposed to be written. It doesn't say it has to be done that way. We have addressed this many times, that this has happened. Now, having sat up here for many years, and having been here years before I sat up here in office and seen other city managers, the only time a city manager gets reviewed in the city of Deerfield Beach in a formal, public thing where someone brings it up is when they wanna try to get rid of them. I've sat here for years, and I've watched the same speakers come up. For many years, they didn't say a word. Maybe the drive from plantation was too far to come up to say about that. They only came here at budget time, never said anything about it. They didn't say anything about us joining, uh, when Mr. Hertz goes ahead and attacks the city manager, and specifically his comments tonight about the move to BSO, which is a decision made by the commission, including former Commissioner Preston. Uh, when that decision was made, Mr. Mr. Hertz, I don't believe, was here to speak out on it. Most of the things that they're complaining about now are things that weren't, they weren't complaining about over the past several years. Um, I know it's election season, and I expect this, but some of these attacks and some of these beating a dead horse, uh, don't make sense. The city has been more responsive when it comes to answering, uh, people's questions. When someone sends a list of ten questions, we have them actually sit down with our staff at a great deal of expense to the taxpayer to answer that one individual's many questions every couple of weeks. Financial reports were given out in our, in our mailboxes every single month for years. That stopped when Mayor Gene Robb said, "I'm sick and tired of getting these big stack of papers every month. Stop putting it in our mailboxes." They've sat there next to the mailboxes for, since that time period. So, to say that the information hasn't been given out is wildly inaccurate. I can tell you this right now, a lot of the information that's put out there is wildly inaccurate. Someone's inability to read a budget and understand the budget doesn't mean that someone is doing something wrong. We've tried to be upfront, we've tried to be open with, with, comes to these issues. We try to answer as many questions as possible, and we will continue to do that. Tonight, we're gonna move things along a little bit faster here tonight. That is a rare occurrence. I think maybe only a handful of time, less than a handful of times, I can think, where an extra minute hasn't been granted. We've allowed people to speak at meetings where they traditionally have never had an opportunity to speak. All the budget workshops that we do, I can tell you, when I first started coming there, when none of these people that are coming up speaking were complaining about that, they didn't have this. You had two hearings on the budget, and that was it, and if you spoke, you got dead silence, and you moved on. And you paid forty bucks to take a look at the budget before it was released. That's what it was. That's not what it is now. I'm so, we're not gonna be able to keep everybody happy in that, but we're certainly gonna try to do that, and I think that's what we need to do. Um, just looking at these really quick to make sure I've answered most of the concerns and questions. Um, go Cubbies. I hope I covered that. Um, hopefully, we can get some information about the advisory committees on the, uh, information that's, uh, the screens that are out front. Um, I believe that is it. Thank you. Go ahead.
Item nine. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach authorizing the sole source purchase of a security camera system for deployment with, in the city from Vented Secure, Vetted Security Systems LLC.
Commissioner Miller?
I might have missed it. Is this the camera for, um, Little Harbor?
Yes, it is.
Okay. That was my question.
Thank you. No, really, Commissioner? Anyone from the, uh, Commissioner Drosky?
And again, it's sole source, because this is the only camera that ties in, like every item we've had before that ties in with the software?
Yes, that is correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public.
Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Not seeing one coming forward. I'm gonna close it to the public.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, a second. We have a rule call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Item ten. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach approving the ranking and award of RFQ 2017 dash eighteen slash forty-eight General Contractors for Federal State Funded Housing Community Development Programs to Fundamental Engineering and Construction, Inc., Stacy Bullmore Construction, LLC, White Way Construction, Inc., James Joyce Construction Corp., M&amp;A Builders, LLC, R&amp;B Remodeling, Hodgins Construction Unlimited, LLC, and Assured Contracting, LLC.
Commission comments? Anyone from the public here to comment on item number ten? Not seeing anyone coming forward. I'm gonna close it to the public.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. We have a rule call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Item number eleven. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving the special event permit application submitted by Bethlehem Missionary Baptist Church to host the 2018 Worship Without Walls Event at 1060 Southwest Third Avenue from November 12th through November 17th, 2018.
Thank you. I, I will say this on that, the reason, the only reason this has come forward, and this event has been going on for years, very successfully, it's a great event, actually, is because of the change in our, um, in our own special events policy. So, this is new, that's the only reason they have to come before us here, but I certainly would like to advocate to all of you to approve this.
And the reason why it's coming before the city commission is it's multi-day, and administratively, I cannot approve a multi-day event.
Is there anyone from the public that'd like to comment on this item? Not seeing anyone come forward. I'm gonna close it to the public.
I'm happy to make a-
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
I am, uh, Demetrius Ford, the pastor of the Bethlehem Missionary Baptist Church, 1060 Southwest Third Avenue, and I'm just here to answer any questions, if there are any. I don't think I needed to say anything, but if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them for you.
What time will food be served?
Well, actually, at this particular event, it'll be on, uh, that Saturday last day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Pastor.
Um, between ten and two.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, before we do, I'm sorry, anyone else from the public here to comment on this item?
Sir.
I'm going to close it to the public. We have a motion. Is it Commissioner Drowski?
I was just going to add, I've seen Pastor Ford preach before, and if you haven't seen him preach, you are missing something. You want to talk about a man of God, he is sitting right here amongst us. It is a treat to watch. And for someone as diversified a background as me, to witness that and watch it, it was a true pleasure and experience.
We have a motion, and a second?
Yep.
Roll call.
Commissioner Drowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Item number 12, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach appointing Anthony Soroka to serve as city attorney for the city of Deerfield Beach, providing for an effective day.
Mayor?
Yes.
We have the comment thing before-
Comments by administration.
Oh, I'm sorry. It skipped.
I'm sorry.
Someone's trying to get out the door fast.
Maybe his age, he's slipping a little bit.
I don't have, yeah, that's exactly, this is why you need someone to-
Okay. Let's keep on schedule here. Administration?
I have nothing to report, but I believe Mr. Soroka, anything?
No. And we don't have any city attorneys comment, so.
Let's move forward then.
Are we the resolution again?
A resolution-
I'm sorry.
No, it was my fault. Resolution, the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach appointing Anthony Soroka to serve as city attorney for the city of Deerfield Beach, providing for an effective day.
Commissioner comments? Are we going to stand there and watch?
No, I think I'll make a motion to approve it. I'll wait till after the public, but I'll still, my motion still stands.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Drowski to Vice Mayor Battle?
I'd like that we have an effective date in here, and what I'd like to see, and it's no disrespect to Mr. Marotis, is, you know, an eventual phasing out, if this is the best way I can put it, a Mr. Marotis and a phasing in of Mr. Soroka. I think this, you know, next, what is it, eight-month window gives us that opportunity to get Mr. Soroka more involved, not that he hasn't been, but make him more public face, so that by the time we get to the transition date in June 2019, it'll be seamless. And again, no offense, Andy, but it'll be like you were never here.
And I agree with you. I think that's the goal, especially at the first of the year. I think Mr. Soroka will start handling more of the meetings. And you're exactly right, I want to go quietly into that night and have Mr. Soroka pick up and not have any gap at all. So we will do that. I think that is appropriate, sir.
We'll still rely on your knowledge, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I would like to say that I grilled Mr. Soroka very intimately, and I have to say it that way. And I would like to go on record as seconding Mr. Parnas's motion, because I think, and provided with the proviso, that we have the same codicil in there that we have with-
It's in here.
With Mr. Marotis. And so I want to second that motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I appreciated the grilling, by the way. I enjoyed it.
Commissioner Miller?
You know, my comments are kind of like District Ford's comments. I'd like to see, starting in January, some serious, having Anthony sit here at least half the meetings or something like that.
We will do that.
So we can just, this one, you're not here, it'll look like denition.
Exactly.
Sorry. But I mean, OJT, doing it right there, I love it. So I'm very supportive of this.
Okay. I feel a little bit differently. I understand that we want to kind of ease out of it. I've been serving with you probably too long, and it's more personal. I don't want to see you go. With all due respect to you, I think you're a wonderful addition, so I can fully support it. That's my two cents. We open this to the public, correct? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Drowski. Anyone from the public here to come up?
Richard Rosen, it's White 97, part of me, Deerfield Beach. I've attended many of the P&amp;Z meetings where Mr. Soroka's handled those meetings, and I've watched Mr. Soroka function, and he's highly qualified to do the job he's doing. Andy will miss you terribly. Years working with you two and on the planning council, and with Bill, you also, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Soroka, I know will do a phenomenal job, and of course, there's going to be big shoes to fill, but he'll have the time to do it and the expertise that he's got. And thank you for supporting him.
Dan Hertz, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. First of all, I think that Mr. Marotis and his law firm do a wonderful job for the city, and I also think that Mr. Soroka will do just as good a job. So what I'm about to say is absolutely nothing to do with their performance, which I think is exemplary, and I think they'll do a fine job. My question to the city attorney here is actually the process. If this is actually a contract, is it necessary for the city, just like when they do with any other contract, to go out and get bids, and also to check the pricing on these matters to make sure that the city is getting the best deal possible? So again, this has absolutely nothing to do with the law firm. I'm just very concerned about the process here. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll wait till everybody speaks and come back. Anyone else from the public? No, if you could address it, because that is a valid-
No, it's a very valid question, and it's a good question, and I'm glad we were able to bring it up. There's a couple of parts to it. One is certainly why you, absolutely, I indicated that at the last meeting, you have the right to go out for an RFP, should you choose to do so, at the last meeting. But there is no obligation under our purchasing code for going out for competitive solicitation for legal services. That is a very, it always has been, and it continues to be a very specific exemption from the purchasing code with regard to legal services. Second, this is really an existing contract. What you're doing, why Soroka has the contract with the city, and it's just a continuation of it, but you're appointing Mr. Soroka as city attorney upon my leaving the office, that's more of a technical response, really the full, you know, so that's kind of a technicality. But the very specific answer is it is a specific exemption from the procurement code, but it is a well-raised point.
Thank you. Is that good? Okay, good.
We got a motion, right?
Motion?
In a second.
In a second. Who did the second?
I did.
Vice Mayor has a second.
Can I just have one more?
Okay.
I just want to say, I thought this process of having Anthony even with us over these months, where we got to know him, and even last night, two hours of ethics training, did a wonderful job. Andy, he did a wonderful job.
He's good.
No, but we got to know him before we had to cross this bridge. And this passing the baton like this is one of the nicest things you've done. You've helped us find a successor, and it reminds me of, it's a well-done, well-thought-out, and a great candidate, so I'm going to be voting yes.
Okay. Let's call the roll, please. We'll call.
Commissioner Drowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Can I just say, thank you very much, Commissioner, for the vote of confidence, and it will be my honor to serve you as your next city attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. We have comments by the commission? District one?
No comment.
Thank you. Commissioner, Vice Mayor?
Just a couple. Senior citizens, if you are as computer illiterate as I am, the Center for Active Aging is having those classes over there, so you might want to check in, so you can become computer literate. The Jobs Resource Fair is going to be on October the 24th. Those looking for jobs, those who want to start a business, whatever it is you want to do in the world of work, this will be your chance to get some technical know-how through the city. And finally, for those of you who are interested in the memorial park and cemetery, we have been approved by the Florida, is it the Heritage or Commission? They have developed a plaque. It's ready to go when the city is ready to open the cemetery, so it's the historical marker for that particular cemetery. And I do want to thank the people at our Historical Society, Ms. Amy Tanner and her group, Emily Lilly and Ms. Stanich and those, they did a wonderful job in helping us to bring this to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. District three?
No comment.
Okay. Commissioner Drowski?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple upcoming events in District four. First of all, this Friday, October 5th, at 7:00, at the Villages of Hillsborough Park. The city is restarting its fall, summer, excuse me, its fall movies out in the park. So the first one is in the Villages of Hillsborough Park. It's Sherlock Gnomes, for anyone with children who may be interested, or not children, that may be interested. They're rotating the parks this year. This used to be an exclusivity to District four and the Villages of Hillsborough Park. This year, they're going to rotate the movies between the various parks in the city. Second, Saturday, October 27th, is the Halloween Hoedown, also in the Villages of Hillsborough Park, from 5:00 to 8:00 in the evening. They moved it to a Saturday night, so this event, which is extremely popular to begin with, is probably going to be even more popular than ever before. And on Halloween night itself, October 31st, a Wednesday, in the Deerfield Mall, where the Public Shopping Center is, BSO is sponsoring Trunk or Treat, where the children can come and safely go Halloween trick-or-treating. And that's all that I have.
Excellent. I have just one item, I believe. We have a student, I was approached by a student from Deerfield Beach Middle School,